I'm in the public hearing, and scheduled here for 5:50. It's in regard to establishing rate on residential customers with net billing generation and updating our ordinance as it reflects certain fees in our electric department. Is there anyone here who would like to speak before we just talk in general about the public hearing and the purpose of it? Eric, would you like to just kind of give us a quick kind of summary of what we're talking about? Because I know that there is one person in the audience that is interested in this, maybe not everybody, but I'd be willing to do that.
Sure. So I tried to sit around the summary earlier today. Essentially, we are formally adopting what they passed, the Senate Bill 100, back in this March, and that is allowing us as a utility to do the new term called net billing. So we have those smart meters and any customer that has any type of renewable energy, primarily solar panels, the meter tracks what we give them as far as electricity and what they produce back on the panels, and then their bill for the difference. Up until that new bill, that credit billing was a one-for-one, so they'd receive the credit at the full retail rate. But with the new bill, as a utility, we're allowed to now do it on wholesale rates. So that allows us to still pay for our operating costs in there. So you'll see in the ordinance as well as in the summary, for any new customer after January 1, that was something that was part of the bill also, was for any existing utilities. Like the gentleman here tonight, there's two that we are currently working with that will be grandfathered in for a period of 25 years. That 25 years came from the bill with some, so any existing system that's in before December 1, 2020, will get that one-for-one full retail credit for the next 25 years. So that was the big part of the net billing. The other part was our fees. We've had the same fees since 1992. So when we were going through updating the ordinance and looking at the fees, Larry Hamilton suggested taking all of our fees. For some reason, they've been the rules and regulations, they weren't never really in the ordinance, they were passed under municipal order. So we got all of them out of the municipal order and into our ordinance. So in doing that, we did a rate study to kind of see what those fees are currently. And that's what those new proposed fees are, is just our current material costs for some of those new fees for both single-phase and three-phase customers.
Anyone have any questions, Eric?
Can I just add a point of clarification, Mayor? And I know we had talked about this. The Senate Bill 100 that Eric's talking about technically doesn't apply to us. We're not required to follow that since we're not a public service commission regulated entity, but we felt like since it was appropriate to go ahead and do that anyway. So we generally follow their recommendations in this case. We could have set a different schedule, set something different, but we felt like since that's what Salt River and some of our neighboring utility companies were doing, that's why we elected to do it that way.
Thank you, Howard. Any other questions?
What would be the average increase for customers? Is that a crazy question?
As far as with the new fees?
Yeah.
I mean, really, this is for anything new. You know, so anything new, any existing, so if it's, you know, if there's an open lot in a neighborhood, there's an existing transformer, we go, you know, the transformer tap fee, we go for $75, $150 for customers, you know, building a new house with an existing transformer. If it was a lot without a transformer, it would be that increase from $200 to $600 just for us to set the transformer, plus the water pooling cost for them. So it's really only for new construction, new builds.
So that new transformer, what does somebody else pad on for the mention? What does that mean? Nothing? Maybe they would get any more credit or no?
Typically, it don't be for an individual customer. If it's going to be multiple lots, they would get divided down to the tax cost. They would just pay the one, the $150 fee if they could serve multiple customers.
Any other questions? There isn't any more questions on the public hearing? Not going to ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, Councilman Williams, on second?
On second.
Councilman Martin Hart, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we adjourned out of the public hearing, and we will convene a regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. A few minutes to catch up on the agenda. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And I always love starting the minutes, and you get a chance to swear in a new officer for Bardstown. I'm going to call Chief Kim Cressick to introduce our new officer.
I'd like to introduce Officer Tim Thompson. He was born in New York and then graduated from Eastern High School, attended the University of Louisville, majored in Justice Administration. Tim was actually a volunteer firefighter with the Worthington Fire Department from 1996 to 1999. Then he was a full-time firefighter with the Middletown Fire Department from 1999 to '03. He was also a fire instructor and a fire inspector. And so then he decided to continue his line in public safety, and he switched over to law enforcement with LMPD. He continued his career in public safety from 2003 to 2019. During his career in law enforcement, he served in a variety of different patrol divisions. He was a field training officer, and he did a lot of things in community outreach as a division resource officer. Tim and his wife Lori are residents here in Bardstown. I'm going to let Tim introduce his family. And they have a family of four children, Max, Mia, Bryson, and Brayden. And so, Tim, I'll turn it over to you after you get sworn in with the mayor, and then you can introduce your family.
Officer Thompson, you're going to be up here. Stand up here and face the group out here, and if you'll raise your right hand, and I'm going to administer the oath to you. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of police officer according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fallen duels with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending or helping guide. Congratulations.
Thanks.
I really don't know a whole lot about Officer Thompson other than our discussion with Chief Cressick and reviewing his resume, but as I did that, I said, "Well, you know, his last name is Thompson." So if you look at our three counties around here, there are hundreds if not thousands of Thompsons. So you could, you'd be able to open some doors, but you might have some closed in front of you too, just depending on who you run into. There's just so many Thompsons, so you should be able to fit in. So we certainly welcome you, and we'd like to give you a moment if you would, maybe talk to the council as well as the people here tonight, and we want to welcome you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Like Chief said, back there in the back is my wife Lori, my son Max, my daughter Mia. Not with us today are Bryson and Brayden, my stepson. They're up in Cheltenham, they live in Cheltenham. First off, let me say I'd like to thank my family for putting up with me, for joining the police department again after I retired. I know they're looking forward to having some me time, but I appreciate the support and opportunity to let you go back. Also like to thank Chief Cressick, Mayor Heath, and all the council members for giving me the opportunity to be a part of Bardstown. I greatly appreciate it. I look forward to serving the community. I look forward to taking my experiences, my knowledge, and helping out people I have to do. It's a great community. We fell in love with it about a year and a half ago. We moved down here. The school's great for kids, just it's like a Hallmark movie. So we look forward to living here. We look forward to be, I look forward to being a bigger part of the community, and I look forward to just working with everyone. So thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Officer Thompson.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And we'd let you, Officer Thompson, we'll also let you know that when it's you and your family have had enough of this meeting, you all are welcome to go. We won't require you to stay listening to electrical ordinances and all the other things we have to deal with tonight, so.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Anybody here in the audience that has anything to bring before the council that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to thank the council for their support. There will be a domestic violence conference and one of emphasis on human trafficking. I feel that as long as I'm in the community, I might as well try to educate too. And so we will have some experts on human trafficking as well as a commercial, and then we'll have domestic violence. Kristen Pierce from WHAS 11 is a keynote speaker. So you guys are all welcome, administration, police, fire, because we will all see it. And I want to thank the mayor for doing the welcome. Thank you so much for giving me this time.
That's Monday night at 6:30, is that correct?
Yes.
And at Pacific Center?
Right.
Okay. Please do this now.
Monday night.
Thank you, Pat. I think Pat Whalen sort of noticed on us that this would be his last meeting until March probably. Wasn't sure he was going to make the special call meeting to leave the second reading on the ordinance, so anyway, we always appreciate Pat's attendance here. All right, let's move on then to bids and contracts. We have amendment number one to our HDR service agreement for the American Ingredients Pump Station. I guess a call on Jessica to give us an update on that.
Yes, the amendment in your packet is essentially for engineering services to do the actual construction design plans permitting for the upgrade to the American Ingredients Pump Station. The original agreement had a preliminary design and cost estimate associated with it, and this proposal amends that to actually complete and execute a set of design drawings permitting in construction. And I believe it actually includes a couple of site visits as well for the bidding process and pump startups for us services.
So, okay, so this is a part of the number, we need to put this forward to the council for approval, or are they for these services that the HDR is providing?
In order to be able to sign the amendment for the additional services amount.
The first estimate you had, the first desired estimate was just basically an estimate of what they thought they were going to have to do. These are hard numbers, right?
Correct, correct. The first preliminary design was just appropriate kind of sizing it and feeling determining what, how large we could physically go based on existing force main size and location, and then coming up with a construction cost estimate so that we knew kind of what our estimated costs were going to be for the city. And then this is the actual final design and permitting and bidding.
This is within the budget that we already allotted, or?
Yes, I have money allocated within the sewer budget to accommodate an upgrade to the station.
Okay, I guess we can get some more discussion if we need to, but then I did ask for a motion to approve amendment number one for the scope of work on the American Ingredients Pump Station replacement for HDR Engineering Services.
So moved, Mayor.
And a motion, Councilman Gibbs, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Shekels, is there any other discussion?
Just kind of noticed really didn't have anything to do with, would American Ingredients probably have paid for this initially or not?
I believe the community got a grant through a certain program back during the eighties with American Ingredients to a factory located out in the Woodland area. So a lot of the infrastructure costs were covered by an initial grant for that. And at this point, the station, you know, in our own end, it's got to the point where we need to, it's nearing its end of life, but we're also looking at some additional, to try to have some additional growth in that area with the residential area, you know, for the residential side of things, so.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion or questions? Is he none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, Jessica. So we had a chance to review the minutes. I know Councilman Hart, you had one, I think, I know that maybe it was two things, but one that you wanted to ask for.
Gary updated them.
Oh, you did? Okay. You want to speak to that?
Yes, I think one was the motion that we made about the parking study. I just suggested that we add the $28,000 be split between the two fiscal years, which was included in our motion. And then the other one was my report on the steering committee for the drug coalition. I felt like that didn't need to be under a city council committee since it's not formally a council committee, that it needed to be under council comments.
So those changes were made prior to this evening. Are there any other changes or corrections approved then by unanimous consent, since they're already included in the packet? Okay, moving on to ordinances, I need someone to introduce ordinance number B 2019-16 for our electric department, Chapter 50.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2019-16, which is an ordinance amending and adopting as amended in an ordinance style and basically establishing a fixed schedule of rates for our electric cable rates. And please ask our city attorney to read the summary.
In summary. We really wrestled with this summary, so. Summary of ordinance number B 2019-16, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended in ordinance style, an ordinance establishing and fixing a schedule of rates to be charged by the city of Bardstown for electrical current used by residential, commercial, and industrial customers of the city of Bardstown, providing and prescribing for billing, due dates, and penalty for failure to pay charges due within the time so prescribed. Establishment and fixing a power cost adjustment surcharge for all customers regardless of classification, Chapter 50. The city council of the city of Bardstown, Kentucky does ordain as follows, that a new section 50.11 net billing for customers with distributed generation be added, and sections 50.02 rates for residential customers, 50.05 service, and 50.07 power factor be amended as follows. Section 52.02 rates for residential customers. This section will be amended by creating a new section E-6 residential customers with net billing and establishing the following schedule of charges and credits for those customers. Subsection E, E-6 residential customers with net billing generation, customer charge $11. All kilowatts per hour delivered .07950 cents per kilowatt hour. All kilowatt hours received .06371 cents per kilowatt hour. Within asterisked notes, for customers with a net billing generation system prior to the effective date of this ordinance, the rate for kilowatts per hour received shall be the same as for kilowatts per hour delivered, this being the retail rate for electric energy, as may be modified from time to time by the Bardstown City Council. This exception expires 25 years after the effective ordinance, date of this ordinance. Section 50.05 service fees and deposits. This section shall be amended by adopting the following fees for service. A temporary pole service, one house per service, $30 for 110 volt or 220 volt. B meter test charges, where the test of a meter is requested during normal working hours by a customer, the customer will be charged as specified to cover the test and transportation costs. A single-phase meter, $20. B poly-phase meter, $30. C return check charge, $50. D deposits. This section will be amended to reflect that deposits shall be retained by the city and upon termination of services applied toward payment of delinquent balance or refunded to the user after one and a half years, so long as balances were kept current and no checks were returned during that period. Persons disconnected for non-payment who have been previously refunded their deposit will be required to tender another deposit in the amount set forth in the rate table of the ordinance. E application for net billing interconnection processing fee level two, $100. F underground service fees per the city of Bardstown Underground Distribution Policies and Regulations, subsection I, Underground Residential Housing Developments. A transformer tap fee, $150 per service, multi-lot subdivisions. B transformer fee, $600 per transformer, single lot extensions. C riser fee, $85 when fed by overhead system. D pulling fee for greater than, no, less than 200 amps, 50 cents. E pulling fee for greater than 200 but less than 400 amps, $1 per foot. F the above fees for residential services contemplate service entrances at 400 amps or less. The city reserves the right to assess a difference of cost from overhead fee for services entrances of greater capacity as well as any other extraordinary installations. Subsection II, Commercial and Industrial Installations. A riser fee, $85 when fed by overhead system. B pulling fee for less than 200 amps, 50 cents per foot. C pulling fee for greater than 200 but less than 400 amps, $1 per foot. D transformer fee, single-phase, $600 per transformer. E transformer fee, three-phase, and then there are less than 400 amps, $800 per, no, greater, less than, I'm having a really hard time here, $800 per transformer. Greater than 400 but less than 800 amps, 600 per transformer. Greater than 800 but less than 1,200 amps, $400 per transformer. Greater than 1,200 amps, no fee. Section 50.07 power factor. This section shall be amended by adopting a formula to calculate the maximum measured kilowatt load for billing purposes each month when the power factor is less than 90%. And the amended formula shall be maximum measured kilowatt load times 90% divided by power factor N percent minus the maximum measured kilowatt load equals the power factor correction kilowatts. Is that right, Eric?
Sure.
Section 50.11, net billing for customers with distributed generation. This section will be added and will allow for net billing for any customer generator who owns and operates a generating facility on the customer's premises and has completed the city's application for interconnection and net billing, provided the generation facility is limited to a maximum rated capacity of 45 kilowatts. These customers will be subject to net billing, subject to measurement through a single meter in accordance with standard metering practices. During a billing period in which the customer generates a dollar value of electricity in excess of the dollar value of electricity consumed plus the customer charge, then the customer shall receive a reimbursement in the form of a dollar-denominated bill credit, which will carry forward to the next bill. Unused credits that exist at the time the customer services terminate are not transferable and have no cash value. The amendments in this ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage and publication as required by law. Rates contained herein shall be effective for January 1, 2020 billing. This summary was certified by me, Audrey Hay, city attorney.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. This is the first reading, so we don't need to have a vote, but we do have to have a second reading and a vote here before the end of the month, so I really was thinking perhaps maybe could we meet again even though we haven't canceled a meeting on the second next week? We don't have a meeting, could we meet at 5:00? Then we'd have to suit most of you all. We'd have a second reading, and then we have one or two minor things.
Next Tuesday, October 27?
HRB, what time? It'll be before that.
6:30.
Okay, so good time.
Okay. Just so you know.
At 5?
Yeah, we just knocked this out at 5:00. And I think we may have one or two minor things that go ahead of the special call meeting.
I have a conflict, Mayor, but you have fun, so.
Okay. Thank you. So while we're on this subject, we'll go next to the reports of staff and committees. Is there anything else the electorate may want to add to public hearing and this ordinance we talked? We do have a municipal order, and we're just going to have the discussion purposes. I guess we could go ahead and move into that if you want. Eric, would you like to talk about the municipal orders? I know that was part of your office committee meeting.
So the municipal order is essentially doing the inverse of the ordinance, so it's taking, stripping out all the fees that was established in 1992. So it's just like the municipal order, taking the rules and regulation, underground policy, and removing all the fees as we're adding them into the ordinance. So that in 92, they did it as one municipal order establishing those rules and regulation and underground policy. So we followed suit and proposed it, but we thought that because we would wait till the second reading to, if it was approved, then the second reading would coincide with the municipal order, so both would go into effect at the same time.
So I think our conversation earlier this week, or yesterday, we're going to do this municipal order, formally vote on it at the special call meeting when we ordain the ordinance changes that we just now had a first reading, so that'll be both done at the same time next Tuesday. Municipal order, we just got to have time to clean it up, take these fees out of that order and clean that up. All right. We have a municipal order number M 2019-07, I'm going to ask Audrey if she would address that later.
Do you want me to read it, Mayor?
Yes.
Municipal order number M 2019-07, a municipal order accepting the application for a tax assessment moratorium certificate for the property located 210 East Stephen Foster Avenue, Bardstown, Kentucky. Be it ordered by the city council of the city of Bardstown, Kentucky. Section one, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at 210 East Stephen Foster Avenue, Bardstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratorium as defined in KRS, Chapter 99.595 and subsequent sections. Section two, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and recorded according to law.
Okay, as you know, we get these requests from time to time. There are properties that are within a historic district that are eligible for this moratorium, so I would ask for a motion then to approve this municipal order 2019-07.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion for Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second, Councilman Buckman, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a quick question, Mayor. On this, and others, maybe you, is it, am I just dreaming here, or maybe I'm thinking of the tax credit? I was thinking if it was assessed at $100,000, you had to spend $100, but that's not, I got to confess, sorry.
I think this just hovers the value at the purchase price, does it increase with the renovations, you know, for a period of five years?
It's five years, I think, yeah.
So if you bought it for $100, you spent $100, it won't get revalued until five years to that new figure of $200,000.
I will make a comment on this, though. The school tax is not part of the moratorium. I don't know if everybody knew that or not, but.
We're only granting a moratorium for our city taxes.
For our city taxes, right. But you just think that that would be part of it because it all counts. But city tax is not part of it, for everybody's information.
So you're saying it increases with the assessment? If the assessment goes up, so does the school tax.
School hasn't counted.
Well, if you rent a county, but this is.
This is just.
It's private for the city.
I know.
Yeah, they.
They would have to apply.
But we can't grant it.
Right. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you. I have another municipal order, 2019-08. This is so we could update our signature card at the bank. We're adding Aaron Bowles, our new CFO, and so we have to have this approved by a municipal order, and the other signatures are the same people prior, but Audrey, I ask you to do that as well.
Municipal order number M 2019-08, whereas the city of Bardstown approved the appointment of Aaron Bowles as the chief financial officer effective November 26, 2019.
of Aaron Bowles as the chief financial officer effective November 26, 2019, now therefore be it hereby ordered and authorized that all signature cards on all city of Bardstown, the city bank accounts, city safety deposit box, city investments be changed effective immediately to reflect that the following are the only persons authorized to sign documents with any two of the following to sign for all withdrawals or checks. J. Richard Heaton, mayor, William Shekels, councilman, Joe Buckman, councilman, Aaron Bowles, chief financial officer.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second to approve this municipal order to add basically adding Aaron to these signature cards.
I'll make the motion to approve the municipal order.
Okay, we have Councilman Hart, we have motion, a second by Councilman Downs. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. All right, we have, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 2019-10 from the Department of Highways, this is an agreement. I think Jessica, if you want to talk to that at all or?
Yes, this is, the city of Bardstown, we applied for some additional discretionary funds to help compensate us for resurfacing for portion of Withrow Court where it's in an industrial area, it gets a lot of, more traffic in, is kind of under a little bit more amusement than some of the other just general residential streets. So this year we applied and requested for these funds for a portion of Withrow Court and we were awarded those funds. So this is just a resolution for the mayor to enter into an agreement to receive that reimbursement.
$47,100 for that payment that must be in the spring or summer of next year because we finished out this year. But you have to have this agreement in place before you can spend those funds anyway.
Correct.
So mayor, if I may, being an order, I'd like to make a motion to approve our Resolution 2019-10 to allow you the likelihood, wish to decide on whether agreeing to get these funds.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agreement with the Department of Highways, a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibbs. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right, thank you. We got quite a few appointments here from peoples whose terms are expiring either near the end of this year or early next year. Lisa Verdet, the assistant city clerk's keeping me straight on this. She finds this stuff out ahead of time, thankfully, and she also was able to find out that all these gentlemen and ladies currently serving in these positions have agreed to serve another term, so that's good. So we'll take them one at a time. Need a motion to approve Jim Taylor, Art, well, can we take them all at once? Yeah, let's see. Jim Taylor on the Ethics Board for a three-year term. His term expires December 27th, this month. Donald Blaco on the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, it's a three-year term. His term expires December 28th, this month. Beth Barkley with the Historical Review Board is a three-year term that will be expiring on January 10th, 2020. Summer Arling House Historical Review Board, three-year term expires January 12th, 2020. And then Chris Ryan to serve on the Tree Board for a three-year term. His term expires also January 23rd, 2020. Could I ask for a motion to approve these people who have been nominated to serve on these boards for their new terms?
So moved, mayor.
Motion by Councilman Williams, do we have a second?
A second and thank all of these people for their willingness to serve again.
I didn't ask Lisa how much arm twist did she have.
No bet.
She didn't come back and ask me to get on the phone, so she must have done a job. Good job of talking them into that because some of these boards require a lot of time. We appreciate this. We have a motion and a second by Councilman Hart. Any other discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Any city council members have any comments to bring before us this evening? Anything else?
Mayor, we're gonna have a Safety Committee meeting Thursday afternoon, 5:00 in the mayor's conference room. You like the building, it looks like.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the council?
Mayor, we might want to congratulate Councilman Williams on attaining a new title recently. Grandfather.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations, you're all, you've been a new pride grandfather.
Mother and baby and father are doing fine. Thank you. Grandparents are doing even better.
Okay, we don't have anything, any thing on cemetery deeds? So I think that was our one major announcement, that you all is the new grandfathers. Happy for that. So if there is nothing else, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Shekels and a second by Councilman Buckman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. We are adjourned.